Oh, yeah.
Really good.
Uh-huh.
You know, whatever.
One, two, three.
Oh, just one up top.
Everybody ready? All right. You ready to?
Always.
Yeah, all right.
Here we go.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled Apex Town Council meeting for March 7th, 2017. Uh, I'd like to, uh, first recognize Councilman Schultz for our invocation.
Please pray ahead with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the season of spring as the trees and flowers come to life. We thank you for all the blessings you bestow upon citizens of Apex. We thank you for the form of government that we have that allows us to, uh, make laws and rules with input from all citizens that are best for the entire town of Apex. We ask you to watch over our military, both home and overseas, as they fight for our freedoms every day. We ask that you also watch over their families as they make sacrifices in our name. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and, uh, if Mrs. Green's class is here and knows the Pledge of Allegiance, I want to hear you from here, okay?
There you go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well done. A's tomorrow for them. Can you make that happen, Ms. Green? Where's Ms. Green? There you are. Good, thank you. All right, thank you. Um, with that, we'll, uh, begin. I hope everybody, uh, was able to get a chance to find the, uh, agenda if you're going to be here for any length of time tonight. That's the stapled sheets out there. Also, if you intend to speak tonight, I'd like to call your attention, first of all, to the yellow sheet that was out on the podium. Uh, this is your, uh, guidelines for, um, participation in public speaking, public forum time, or public hearings. Uh, one of the things I want to point out is those four yellow sheets up there, if you intend to speak at public forum, or one of the three public hearings that, uh, that are going to be presented tonight that you need to sign in, the clerk will be bringing those to me in about twelve or fourteen minutes from now. Uh, so, um, feel free to walk up and sign if you intend to do that. Uh, with that, now we move into the time of presentations and we start off with, uh, Danielle Green, Olive Chapel Elementary School, will give us our first presentation tonight.
Good evening, Council. Uh, my name's Danielle Green. I'm the academically and intellectually gifted teacher at Olive Chapel, and tonight we wanted to take an opportunity to thank you for hearing us. Um, we did a project-based learning activity that focused on the town of Apex. I gave the students a question, a very adult question for them to research and analyze, and then they had to formulate their opinions on some shifts in the Apex Peak Plan. And so, the question I gave them was, um, while Apex enjoys its small-town charm, will big business and development affect its character? Tonight, I want you to hear from a couple of our students on their feelings on the project, some challenges they faced, and their final opinions. Thank you.
What I liked about the... What I liked about the project was that there was almost equal conflict on both sides, and there was a lot of in- information and news on it. Analyzing the conflict and finding common ground and was a... was challenging. And with that, we were able to learn about what we see every day and connect it to school skills like research, nonfiction text writing, critical thinking, and presentation skills. My group decided not to be on one side of the argument, but made a whole different solution to the problem. We decided... we decided to build up instead of spread out.
I enjoyed learning about Apex and its conflicts. I also liked the challenge of putting together all the research and doing a project about things I see every day. We also learned things when we thought we were just doing a project. We learned things like research, reading informational texts, writing, critical thinking, and presentation. I found putting together research and looking for things that might not be easy to find were challenging, but I also enjoyed the challenge, so it wasn't that bad. I chose a balanced plan because I wanted a more balanced Apex. I also didn't want too much or too little of anything.
We learned about researching and using technology. I enjoyed learning about the city that I've been living in my whole life.
Again, I thank you for hearing us tonight, and overall, our group, um, was able to decide that they felt that the, um, Apex Peak Plan, while it was very interesting in the research that they, uh, understood, they had a lot of focus on parks and rec and increasing that in the town of Apex, as well as making sure that we stick to small business as well as a balance with big development. So, um, we look forward to hearing from the Council as far as our feedback from our projects that are outside, and thank you again for your time tonight.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I think I speak for the Council when I say, we're very excited to see young people excited in our town. Um, many people don't understand why we do what we do because we have a life too. We have, um, jobs and we have things to do, but we find that giving back and finding ways to get involved is actually very rewarding in a completely different way, and that's why we're up here. So, thank you very much, and I hope that excitement continues to carry on for the rest of you. Uh, let's now move on to Presentation Two. Uh, this is our Assistant County Ranger for Wake County USFS, Radar Harrison.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for inviting me here this evening. It is a pleasure to be here to celebrate your Arbor Day and to present the North Carolina Forest Service plaque, uh, to the town of Apex, which is a Tree City USA Award, which you accomplished in 2016. Apex is one of eighty-seven cities and towns in North Carolina and over three thousand four hundred in the nation that have received this award, this recognition, in 2016. This marks your first time that you will have done this, and you're... and this is a national recognition that you really should, uh, be proud of. There are a lot of things that you have to do forth to be... get this recognition. Looking at the history of Tree City USA, it was established in nineteen seventy-six. The Tree City, uh, USA program was sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation Incorporated with the National Association of State Foresters and recognizes communities that make planting and caring for trees a priority. There are nearly four million residents in North Carolina that live in tree cities from Charlotte to... well, that have more than eight hundred thousand people. The residents of Bath will only have two hundred fifty. Keep in mind, Wake County has approximately sixty-six people that move into it every day. So, keeping our trees is a priority, and congratulations for you, to you all, for making it a priority. The Tree City USA program is administered by the North Carolina Forest Service, and, uh, I am here today to present you this award in recognizing things that you have done for urban trees such as, uh, urban health, uh, sustaining urban forests that reduce, uh, energy costs, uh, consumption, uh, boost property values, build strong community ties, and honors the community. In 2016, Apex followed and met the following criteria. They maintained a public tree ordinance which established policies for maintaining streets and parks. They established and maintained a tree board, which was responsible for caring and the management of community trees. They also, um, had a... have a community forestry program that actually has a budget of, uh, and the minimum actually two dollars per capita. You all have definitely exceeded that. Um, and you hold an annual Arbor Day observance and proclamation to celebrate the trees and the many benefits that it provides. So, on behalf of the North Carolina Forest Service, uh, Tree City USA, and the National Association of State Foresters, I'd like to present you this award. And please keep in mind, Earth Day is coming up on May the twenty-second, on April the twenty-second, and National Arbor Day is the twenty-eighth.
Appreciate you coming out here today. Um, let me ask the town manager if he could help me recognize those who helped us get here, that are here tonight and...
So, the, uh, David Wood was the staff person responsible for organizing all that, and then the Citizen Tree Board is... some of them are here. If they could stand up.
Come on up.
Come on up, see, that'd be great.
Yeah, come on up, come on up. That's right. So, I just wanted to recognize everybody else that's up here too. Uh, so, we have a, a Tree Citizen Advisory Panel, made up of citizens and experts in their field, um, also Environmental Committee, um, Nicole Dozier, our Mayor Pro Tem and the Chair of that, Bill Jensen, committee member as well. Uh, but everybody's pulled together to do that. The Environment... Environmental Committee also acts as the Tree Board, which is part of the requirements to be, uh, recognized as Tree City USA. Uh, everybody knows, if you've been here long enough, that when you see development happening, you see some trees being cut down, you worry about what it's going to look like in the future. Uh, what we're trying to do today is to find that right balance where we can maintain the quality of life and the greenery around us and put in common sense order to make sure that we review them on a regular basis, uh, so that we're doing the right things for the citizen in the long term. Uh, and we recognize that, uh, that by doing so, uh, we're creating a balance for the future. Thanks, everybody.
Before you all move, let me... let me get you all over here real quick, 'cause the mic stands in the way, so you can all kind of crunch together. Okay, thank you.
And, uh, I don't see her here tonight, but I would like to publicly recognize, um, Kate McDonald, who came up, um, might be nine months ago, I... I want to say, but almost a year. Uh, and in public forum, which we're about to have in just a little bit, she pointed out to us that this, um, certification existed. Um, we heard, we listened, we followed through, and that's why we're here tonight. With that, we... we finish our presentations. We now move to the part of our agenda that is consent agenda. Consent agenda items are generally considered to be routine, and we expect no opposition. Uh, we act upon them in a single motion. However, if any Council member would like to discuss one of these offline, not offline, but, um, outside of consent and later on in the agenda, they certainly can pull one of those items. Uh, at this time, I'll ask Council if they see an item they'd like to pull for later discussion or ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll say that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve consent? Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Our consent agenda is approved. We now get to the point of our meeting where we decide on the agenda for the rest of the evening. Um, in looking at what's on the printed agenda, we see we have some public hearings. There are two that are quasi-judicial. Um, it is my understanding that, uh, that the two presenters of these have discussed. I want to just see if both are amenable to swapping the order of those two. Okay, I see... I see them both nodding yes, so, um, it's my recommendation to Council that public hearings two and three be reversed in order, uh, to accommodate Mr. York, who has another engagement in a, let's say, a distant Wake County town. Any, uh, any comments on the agenda or a motion to approve it with that change?
Motion to approve with the change swapping public hearing two and three.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, and further discussion. All in favor of approving the agenda with the change of public hearings two and three being reversed, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, we have set the agenda for the night. This now takes us to the public forum. Uh, public forum is an opportunity for the public to speak to us, the Council. Um, this is an opportunity for you to tell us what's on your mind. It is a one-way communication opportunity. We will listen while you tell us. Um, you do have a three-minute time limit in order for people to get to bed at a reasonable time. Most points can be made very effectively inside of three minutes, but just to make sure, we have a green, yellow, red light system here on the table, just to help you out. Um, I pulled now the public forum sign-in sheet, um, and, um, recognize, uh, that I have six people who have signed up. Um, again, this is the guideline sheet for speaking tonight. If during the presentation of someone's talk, you hear something in the audience that you like, um, you may use the deaf applause sign, which is to wiggle both hands in the air like this. Go ahead and do it. I know, we... there, go ahead, go ahead. There we go. So, if you hear something you like, that is applause, and we will recognize it by seeing it with our eyes. With that, I'll now begin and open the public forum, and the first two people up here, Jeanie Hack and then, uh, Sean... sorry, Sean Gookelberger? Did I get it?
Sure.
All right. Uh, so, you get to come on up right after Ms. Hack. Um, after that, Margaret Pauls and Tara Llewellyn.
Good evening. My name is Jean Hack. I live at ten seventy-five South Hughes Street, and I was born here eighty-eight years ago. So, I am a longtime lover of this town. I think it's the very best place in the world to live. Tonight, I'm here to ask you to please consider allowing the Apex United Methodist Church to have handicap signs in the... on Hughes Street in front of our church. We remodeled our church a couple of years ago and went to great extent for our handicap residents who are members of our church. We have five services on Sunday, so that's five congregations, really, that come and go and park on Hughes Street if they're lucky. So, I'm asking you tonight to allow us to put up Sunday-only handicap signs on Hughes Street. It will enable us to use the ramp that enters our sanctuary and, uh, crossroads, fellowship hall, and music rooms, and all of those things. And we have a lot of handicap residents, uh, who live in Apex and come to our church, and so, we really would appreciate this. I think it's not an unreasonable request. I think that all of us are going to get old one day and need to have handicapped accessible places. Please allow us to put up handicap signs on Hughes Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hack. Well-stated. I think I saw Russell writing and our town manager writing here, so I think we've... we've heard that request, and we'll take a note. Uh, Sean, come on up. And, uh, Margaret Pauls, as soon as Sean's done, feel free to be ready to start.
Distinguished members of the Town Council, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, my name is Sean Gookelberger. I reside at one thousand two Cuttington Court in the established Apex community and neighborhood of Whitehall Manor. I am the Acting Vice President of the Whitehall Manor Homeowners Association. What brings me before you this evening is to, once again, state in a public forum and record our neighborhood's absolute opposition to the current plan to build the bridge over South Salem Street and CSX Railway at the intersection of Apex Peakway. Okay? It was stated. Um, the Whitehall Board has already sent a letter to the town of our opposition to this plan as it currently exists, so that should be a matter of public record. Uh, this proposed bridge, um, will be an absolute eyesore to our community and a black eye on the town, in my opinion, okay, and the opinion of our neighborhood. Uh, we are a gateway community to the downtown area and to the city limits of Apex, and as people drive in from five forty or drive out of town, they're going to see this giant bridge blocking our beautiful neighborhood. It's going to have a negative impact in so many different ways on our neighborhood, uh, both visually and functionally. Uh, so, beyond that, there's been some points made by our residents that I just want to share briefly with you. Uh, absolutely home values are going to be negatively, uh, impacted here. Uh, appraisals, resale values, uh, beyond that, traffic congestion and difficulty getting in and out of our neighborhood are, uh, being voiced very strongly right now. I can speak to this. I leave for work every day going to and from our neighborhood. Traffic is backed up now, and it's difficult to get across three lanes, uh, in any direction getting across. Um, and we're still growing, and the bridge isn't built yet, and there's no traffic light. So, it's, um, it's not looking good. Um, ideally, and I know we've been down this road many times before, ideally, we all know, an at-grade crossing would be requested and preferred. CSX will not acquiesce. They won't listen, which they should, because it's for the good of the town and its residents. Absolutely no bridge. Simple as that. Think of it this way, members of the Council. You all live in Apex, I think. Um, think about this. Go out your back porch. Go out onto your back deck. Go out on your screen porch. Look out your back door. Twenty feet away, you'll have a twenty-nine-foot wall you're staring at. That's what we're facing. Simple as that. You want that in your backyard? You want us to have that in our backyard? Consider that.
Thank you.
We'll be here on the fourth. Thanks.
Ms. Pauls? And then Tara Llewellyn, be ready to come up next.
Hello. Uh, my name's Margaret Pauls. I prefer to go by Katie, but I went official on the phone today.
Okay.
Um, I live at ten oh-three Baronok Court in Whitehall Manor. Um, Sean touched on many points that I want to bring up with you today, so I'm going to try to... try to not... not overlap. Um, but I want to tell you that I am a mother of two small boys. Okay, I have a five-year-old and an eight-month-old. You know what my five-year-old's favorite thing to do every day is? Is go outside and play with his friends. We are one of the neighborhoods that has community, and everyone in our circle in Baronok and Marston who have small kids, we all play in that circle. They come home every day and are so excited to play with their friends. And we're looking out there going, oh, we're going to have a thirty-foot, twenty-foot bridge in our backyard. Isn't that wonderful? You know, we're going to have people cutting through and... and cars are going to be coming through. Are my children going to be able to play in their... in their... with their friends out... out in their, um, circle? That's a... something that, uh, really concerns me. Um, so, I'd like to ask for you to halt the Peakway expansion. I... I don't think it's right for our town. I don't think having this gigantic bridge sits with the aesthetic of our town, and it just, ugh, um, I feel like, I don't know. There's two... over two hundred and forty homes in this area that are going to be affected by this. The traffic is going to be affected. You're going to have lost revenue. So, eight... it's going to affect the city because you're going to lose tax revenue because price, uh, home values are going to go down. Okay? One of the... the things that we heard earlier was balance. I heard a lot about balance, about being the Tree City USA, you know, the kids coming up here talking about that. This is where you guys really need to think about balance, and that's... this bridge is not balanced. This is overgrowth. Okay? This is overgrowth in its finest. And from my understanding, there's been no negotiation with the railroad on... on an at-grade... at-grade crossing, and I don't know why we haven't done that. And also, I'd like to... from my understanding, Council rules state that there is no public discussion that can occur for presentation and prevented many of us from speaking to you. The last time the Peakway connection was brought up at Council, and I hope you will allow us to comment and express our concerns at the next presentation, which I believe is April fourth. So, um, I really, um, want to leave you with a point that this is really devastating to the people who live in the circle. We do not like this. We do not want this, and I feel very strongly for the rest of our neighborhood. So, thank you for your time, and I really appreciate it. And I'd like to invite you, any of you, if you'd ever like to come over to our circle and, you know, we'll... we'll, uh, show you some nice southern hospitality. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pauls. Tara Llewellyn? And then Christine Williams will be up next.
She's with me.
Okay, all right.
This is in reference to public hearing number one, so I don't know if Tim was going to say something first, or do you want me to do...
Well, public hearing number one will be... we'll have a public hearing for public hearing number one if you want to wait.
Okay. Okay, sorry.
That's all right. I'll, um, i... if both of you intend to speak to that one, I'll push... I'll move your names over to that... that sheet. All right. Um, and so, then that leaves John Harrell. Same thing? All right. No, that's all right. That's all right. Okay, that's all I have for the public forum. Did I miss anybody that really intended to speak that didn't? Appreciate everybody following the rules. I'll close the public forum, and, uh, at this time, I will... before we move on, I will say, we did hear you, we listened, um, and we'll... we'll take that into account. Uh, moving forward now, we go into our time of public hearings. Public hearing number one, and, um, I will open public... so you'll know when it comes time, okay? Sure. Uh, public hearing number one, this is, uh, to receive citizen input regarding appropriation of town funds in support of a coworking facility. Joanna Helms is presenting... oh, no, sorry. Joanna Helms has a substitute. This is Tim Donnelly.
We have dropped in quality, Mayor.
I'm correcting this right now. Go ahead.
Appreciate it. Mayor, Council, citizens, uh, we have a public hearing tonight to consider a proposal to develop a coworking space in downtown Apex. Um, the Economic Development Committee and the Economic Development Department have been working on this for, I think, over a year now, trying to see if we could get some interest in a proposal and a site that might work. And tonight, Lighthouse Recruiting, doing business as Coworking Station, has provided a proposal for you to consider. Because it's economic development, you have to have a public hearing before you would expend any funds on this project. So, what we're looking for tonight is public comment, and I think, uh, obviously, the coworking station's going to make a comment proposal, uh, but any other citizens. And then, if, at the end of that process, when you close the hearing, if you wanted to give direction to staff, you could direct us to pursue this. Uh, you could consider it at a later time or whatever your pleasure is.
All right.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Tim before we go into public hearing? All right, thank you, Tim.
And Joanna, I apologize if she's sick and could not make it.
All right, thank you. Um, at this time, I'll open the public hearing, and I'll refer to the list I have. Tara Llewellyn, uh, you're now up, and if Christine Williams wants to come with, that's fine. Um, each of you have, uh, if you're... let me ask before we start, are you planning to present together or...
Together, yeah.
Okay, all right.
We didn't know if we both needed to.
All right, that's fine. And please set your names and addresses for the record, then.
Absolutely. Um, thanks for having us tonight. I'm Tara Llewellyn. I'm a resident of Apex here. I live at eight twenty-three Shackleton Road.
And I'm Christine Williams. I'm... I'm the community coordinator at Coworking Station. I live at fifty-one oh-two Woodfield Lake Road in Cary, North Carolina.
Thanks for having us. Um, we're obviously here representing Coworking Station. Uh, we're both employees. I'm the Director of Operations. I have been on the project since before we opened in Holly Springs last April. Um, but, as I stated, I'm a resident here at Apex, so I feel very passionately about bringing a similar type of space to our Apex residents and entrepreneurs and businesses. Um, I... I'm very invested in the community. I've been here four of the six years I've lived in North Carolina, and I've lived in Cary, Holly Springs, Raleigh, and this is where I chose to end up, so... um, my stepdaughter graduated from Apex High School last year. Go Cougars! So, I... I love Apex, and I really, um, like I said, I'm very invested in this community and want to do everything that we can. Um, we are at Coworking Station, I'm very, very passionate about helping entrepreneurs and small businesses especially. Um, what we have noticed in... in speaking with Economic Development Office in Apex is that there really is a void for, uh, something such as a coworking space in the Apex community. Um, we are talking about, and I know you've seen this proposal, so I'm not going to go over that in detail, but some of the things that are maybe not in this proposal that we've submitted to you, um, the space that we would like to occupy is in downtown Apex. Um, we actually have looped offices here, keeps the headspace, um, above Waverly Motoring, so, um, it is a really great space that has not been inhabited by a business for the last forty years. So, we'd be taking over a historic space that is not being currently utilized and... and bringing something that the community needs and is looking for. We have, in Holly Springs, a few members are ready that are Apex residents. They're driving all the way to Holly Springs just to get the coworking vibe, just to get that networking environment and... and build their business and work with other businesses in the area. So, like I said, we... we really are interested in helping to fill that void. We have been open, like I said earlier, since... We have been open, like I said earlier, since April of two thousand sixteen. We're coming up on our one-year anniversary, anniversary. And, um, we are already, we've been at capacity for the past several months. Um, we have found that even though, uh, going into it, a lot of the residents of Holly Springs didn't know what co-working was and we had to do a lot of education, since then, it's just really taken off and it, it really, it did fill a void that the businesses and entrepreneurs needed in that area. We have had over fifty businesses use our space for some sort of business development or, um, business activities, uh, in addition to people renting space regularly from us. And we'd like to see the same kind of thing be present here in Apex. What we've also noticed since coming into Holly Springs is that, you know, Apex has this great downtown. Everybody loves Apex. We have been in so many meetings that everybody wants to talk about, "How can we make Holly Springs like Apex?" Everybody just loves Apex. And, um, actually, since we've opened the co-working space in downtown Holly Springs, even though for the past eighteen years, there's been almost no economic development down there for businesses coming to the downtown area, we've had three or four projects already start to take off and investors coming to invest in the space down there so that they can build something like what you guys already have here. And I think that a co-working space in the downtown area would be just an added value to what you guys already have. Like I said, Apex is already established, so we just are looking for, for something else that we can bring to the community. Our passion for entrepreneurs and small businesses is how we would like to help Apex fill that gap. I know I'm probably over my three minutes. I'm sorry for that. Um, I, our, our motto at Co-Working Station is, "Life is too short to work alone." And we really would like to, to partner with Apex to make that possible, uh, that the, the small businesses and entrepreneurs don't have to work alone. They can have the space of their own here in Apex to call home.
And one thing I do want to add, um, you know, just speaking on expansion and growing in the community and, and building up and maybe not out, and addressing some of that is, co-working enables, will enable, if, um, you guys saw the Upfit Plan. That Upfit Plan will enable twenty-three members, or even twenty-three businesses to grow in Apex in one building, in a small amount of square feet. Um, and, and, you know, we're looking forward to keeping business in Apex and in this area so that will enable these IT professionals, tech startups, um, you know, people that wanna work from home to stay in their community and work where they live instead of traveling out to Raleigh or to, to Durham to go to these other co-working spaces.
And, and speaking with Karen, I'm gonna use her words, um, that, uh, in, in preparation for this, this, um, meeting tonight, uh, she said it really well. You know, we, we're so passionate about helping entrepreneurs and small businesses. We wanna help be that vehicle that drives that to, to, for Apex, for that to become a focus of Apex as well. To, you know, we've already got this, this established businesses here. We wanna help the, help support and network the small businesses and the startups that can come and become established here so that then they can grow their business and Apex can grow in its entrepreneur base as well.
Alright.
I have a question.
I'll, let me finish the public hearing and then we'll see when we get to discussion, okay? Don't go away.
Okay.
But thanks.
We're happy to hear it.
I mean, feel free to have a seat, but don't, don't leave the room. We may have a question for you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Alright, thank you. Uh, John Harrell? Okay, did you have anything you wanted to say in addition? Okay, alright, very good. Alright, um, not seeing anyone else wanting to speak on that matter, I'll close the public hearing, refer the matter back to council. Um, at this time, um, certainly, the question in front of us is, do we want to ask staff to move, uh, forward with at least pulling together some version of a contract or an idea or agreement that may, um, be then later brought to us for review and consideration? If we do that, it doesn't encumber us to do anything. We may still, um, decide not to move forward. But, uh, with that said, I will ask to see if there's any clarification questions that might be asked.
Um, I found my answer. Thank you.
Oh, very good. Alright. Any further conversation?
It just sounds like the town of Apex is, uh, being asked to contribute in total about a hundred and seventy mil, or a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. How much?
I think it is.
Well, that, that was the three years, and I'm also reading about a fifty thousand dollar Upfit payment.
That's included in the seventy.
Is, okay. So, it's about a hundred and nineteen. Alright.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. Any, anything else from anyone?
Well, this was something that came out of the Economic Development Committee that, uh, Councilman Jensen and I have been working on tremendously for the last, you know, twelve months at least. Um, this is obviously a, a big need in Apex to, uh, help support and launch, uh, a, a small business hub. Uh, these things are, are very popular in downtown Raleigh and Durham. And, uh, they help a small business collaborate with other businesses and then launch into a bigger space potentially. And, um, I'm very excited about this opportunity, uh, if the council can agree to, to, uh, do a public-private partnership here for a three-year period to help them get launched, help them get started. We're phasing out gradually over a three-year period and, and we'll be out of it altogether in three years. Uh, I think this is, this is exciting.
Okay. Any, any further comments from anyone?
Yeah, I'm gonna be the stick in the mud here. I just don't think this is something we should be doing. I mean, I appreciate everything that was said, the benefits to the small business owner and the potential to grow and grow, uh, be successful and grow out of that space. But, to me, this is nothing more than the town of Apex speculating on a new business that I don't think we should be doing. In fact, this concept was tried a number of years ago. Maybe the, you know, the economy's changed now. This will work, but it failed when last time I was trying downtown Apex. And so, I, I think we have no, no business being, doing this. So, I'm, I'm opposed to it. But I support the project. It wants to be funded privately. Go for it. I mean, it is an exciting project. I just don't think we should be doing it.
Alright.
Well, it, Wes and I have been working at this, trying to find a, a place and actually to have it just done by, um, private enterprise. But it's a very tricky thing to get off the ground. And we are competing with other towns. And I understand what you're saying, Jane. I do have some hiccups there. But overall, for the price, it, it's, it's not a huge space that we have, but it's right downtown. That's the beauty of it. And the nice thing is, you know, they give seminars and things like that. If it's too small a space for that, they can go right down the street to the Cultural Center and we have plenty of space there. So, we can work those, uh, together. And, um, I just think it's, um, we, we've been spending a lot of money on economic development and this is one of the key items where you can bootstrap yourself and, and move it on up. So, I, I just, uh, I, I understand your concerns. At, at the same time, I think it's something that we need to do.
The other thing I, I'll probably be on the losing end of this, but, uh, I would like to see some form of measurement to know whether this is money well spent. So, at the end of three years, was this worth it?
At the end of three years, this, this business will have to be on its own. And it, and that is gonna be the result of what we're trying to do.
So, you're saying some sort of tracking?
Metrics.
Some sort of metrics, right?
Right.
At the end of three years, what happened because of our investment?
How many businesses were successful?
We can run metrics throughout the time also with, knowing what the businesses are there. We can certainly do that.
Yeah, I'm sure Co-Working Station could probably track that.
One concern is that we make sure that we have the right types of businesses in, in this, like the IT business that they were talking about and other high-tech, because that's what we're trying to drive for. We don't want stuff that can go almost anyplace. We want high-tech that will come here, build and become part of the community with high-value jobs. I understand what you're saying and I think it's a good idea to track that.
Anyone else have anything?
Um...
Well, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, there you go. Um, so, a couple of things are mentioned about sort of what, what kind of, um, businesses we want to attract into this co-working space. So, are you suggesting that in the contract, there would be some language related to sort of a carve-out? These are the, these are the priority-type businesses of...
Yeah, I think there's, you want the priority, but, uh, at the same time, if it's starting up and you don't have enough of those, um, you could have, I would think, short-term of other types so that you can move them out and get the other ones in as they become available. Because the, it, the rent does help pay for this whole thing. So, we have to, it has to be filled, but you'll wanna fill it with the right ones. And maybe that doesn't quite mesh at first. But that's the goal.
Yeah. Well, I think, uh, this, this is, this co-working, um, idea is innovative and I think that's, um, something that we may just strive for. I think, uh, bringing dozens of people together and a sense of community and also, um, you know, taking care of their families themselves, um, in that way. Then people do that, they spend money. You know, when people own businesses and they have jobs, they spend money. They're in downtown Apex. So, as you mentioned, perhaps they would run out to Hallie or eat lunch there. And, um, if we prioritize people in Apex that live in Apex and, uh, doing this too, that's win-win for, for us. And small businesses usually buy from other small businesses. So, that's how I look at it as an economic development driver also. So, I'm in support of, um, asking the staff to kind of frame this up a little bit more.
Alright.
And, and I'll agree with her and, um, with her, with, with Mayor Pro Tim DeJure. And, uh, I've, I've seen the co-working space in Holly Springs and it's, it's fabulous. And I think that it's good for long-term businesses, but it's also good for short-term businesses comes in and then they move on to somewhere else. And what you're saying about small business, we, we know it's the backbone of the community, backbone of business and, um, I think we need to support it. And I think this will be a win-win for the town and the community, uh, the downtown. We're trying to do things to help them and I think this is a great opportunity to step in and help the downtown as well.
Alright, well, let me ask for a motion. I think there's enough positive comments for...
I think we still made the motion already, did you not?
Was there a motion?
Not really. I mean, I...
She suggested. Well, I'll let... I, I will make the motion then.
Okay.
That, that, uh, we, um, have town staff move ahead with looking at contracts and, and the, uh, detail that has to be taking place to make a final decision.
Okay, and I'll second that. Just at least you guys have that part.
Alright, we have a motion, motion to authorize staff to move forward in putting together, uh, a contract that is, um, or an agreement that at least follows the terms and the spirit of the discussion that we've had so far.
Right.
Um, are there any further discussion or points that we might want to include?
And we want to include, um, Councilman Schultz's, um, metrics, uh...
Metrics, nature.
Okay.
As part of the...
Yeah.
And like maybe at the end of, like, the three-year term or something, the, the Co-Working Station can give us a presentation or staff can.
Yeah. And, and, and certainly, I guess I should say, certainly the, the specifics of the contract can be discussed as we see and review. But this is just, the, the idea here is to give them a really good starting point that's consistent with the overall opinion. Alright, any further discussion or shall I call for the vote? Alright, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Alright, so that passes, uh, four one. And I think, I think it would be a good idea for any council members who have further thoughts on, "Hey, I'd like to maybe see this part of it." Feel free to follow through with, uh, Tim, Joanna, Drew as necessary to kind of collate some of those ideas and parameters. Um, I think the idea, the big picture here is, we don't wanna do it just for the sake of doing it. We want to, to see that it's an overall benefit for people in Apex. Um, I think the idea of a resident in, in Apex, um, being given favor is significant because that, um, particular item is gonna give you roots to, less likely to move your company elsewhere. And the whole point of helping is to see it actually flourish and stay where it is or at least nearby. Certainly, somebody from, you know, fifty miles away who wants to take advantage of our program is not gonna be inclined so much to stay once they're here if they, um, participate. Uh, the metrics, I think, is a very good point. And I think that those metrics ought to be determined early upfront so that we can know what the measure of success is for the program. And frankly, can be reviewed annually. I would be willing to even, you know, have, have that be part of it.
Yeah, I like that, yeah.
You know, we wanna do it.
And, and the metrics will give us decision points to make different, uh, directions that need to be. And for the people that are running it, certainly, they've got, uh, knowledge from how to, on how to do this from past experience.
Sure. Alright, um, thank you, council. Um, let me just check town manager. I think this is a disposition or is this the town manager?
Yep, we're good.
Okay, great. Alright, with that, we'll now move into, um, public hearing number three, our quasi-judicial public hearing. Um, just as a reminder, this was swapped in order. So, we're gonna start with public hearing number three, uh, quasi-judicial public hearing. And for those of you who have been through quasi-judicial public hearings before, they do have a specific process that they follow. And, uh, in order to be completely legal, I'm going to refer to very meticulously planned notes by our town attorney to make sure we're doing this properly. The town council normally functions in a legislative capacity. Major site plan hearings are quasi-judicial, which means the council acts essentially as a court of law. The burden is upon the applicant for the major site plan to put on evidence to show that they meet the criteria found in the town's Unified Development Code. Anyone opposed to the application must put on evidence of similar kind showing the criteria have not been met. Testimony must be given under oath and all testimony and evidence provided to the council must be competent, material, and substantial. Pursuant to North Carolina general statutes, competent evidence does not include opinion testimony of lay witnesses on certain matters. The parties have the right to cross-examine witnesses and to present rebuttal evidence. The town council will apply the criteria contained in the UDO and make its decision based on the evidence and testimony presented at the hearing. And just to make sure I'm going with the right one here, the town council will now take up the case of the major site plan for Cambridge Village Phase Two. At this time, I'll open the public hearing and I'd ask that anyone who wants to be sworn in to speak, uh, come see the town clerk right now. I'm going to check my sheet to see. This is public hearing number three. Alright, I didn't get sign-ins for public hearing number three, so I'm gonna bring this sheet there in case anybody needs to actually sign it. So, at this time, uh, I see people are still signing, but let me just ask, um, if the applicant or the representative for the applicant could identify themselves just by raising your hand? Okay, Mr. York, right? Alright. Uh, and, uh, all the supporters that are here on behalf of the applicant, if so called, you intend to speak, please raise your hand so we can see. Okay. Um, and are there any opponents here who wish to put forth a case in opposition to this? Please raise your hand very high 'cause I don't see it. Alright, so I see no opposition that will, uh, serve to streamline our, um, quasi-judicial public hearing tonight. We will still follow the process to be legal, uh, but there should be, um, we should be able to go pretty quickly, I think. Alright, this time, uh, I'll ask each council member, including myself, uh, to describe, first, any communications about the case you may have made with the applicants regarding, uh, tonight's hearing. Two, if you have any relational or financial conflict related to this case. Or three, if you'll be able to decide this case impartially and solely based on the competent evidence presented at this hearing. Um, I will begin and move to my right and then we'll come back around. I have had no communications on this item. I have no relational or financial conflicts and I will be able to hear this case partially and make a decision based on competent evidence. Mayor Pro Tim?
I have no communication conflict or financial conflict and can be impartial.
I have had no communication about this case, uh, no financial conflict, and I can hear this case impartially.
I've had no communication, no relationship, and no financial conflict. I can hear this case.
I have no conflicts and I have, have no, um, issues in hearing this.
What they said.
Okay. Is that okay?
No.
Just wanna make sure. Alright, she says okay. Alright. Uh, let, let me ask, um, if any council members have gone to view this site with respect to this hearing tonight? Please indicate. No one? Okay. Uh, with that, I will, I will move on to the next item. Uh, at this time, uh, I'll ask if there is staff that wished to make any opening statements on this matter?
No opening statements.
Okay. Uh, does the applicant wish to make an opening statement? Okay. Uh, and there is no opponent. So, at this time... So at this time, uh, town staff can begin presenting evidence. Um, and after each, um, person who testifies will have a cross-examination. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Brenda Vega, seventy-three Hunter Street, Apex, North Carolina. I have been the principal planner for the town of Apex for ten years. I have sixteen years' experience in local government planning, and I have been, um, certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners for over ten years. To orient you to the site, this is located at Apex Peakway, um, Fifty-Five and South Hughes. Um, it is, um, near Broadstone Station Plan Unit Development. It is part of the Broadstone Station Plan Unit Development with Walmart, Broadstone Station Apartments, and some vacant parcels. The zoning district is planned unit development. To the north, there is planned commercial. To the south is more of the planned unit development and tech flex. To the east is, uh, Lawrence Crossing, planned commercial. And, uh, to the west is office and institutional and medium-density residential. For land use, um, we have office employment, um, to the west, and office and commercial services. And the area around it is medium-density, high-density, office employment, and commercial services. The site is made up of two parcels, uh, containing fifteen point six-six acres. The larger parcel contains the three currently connected buildings, which you can see on this aerial, and a wellness center or, um, their, uh, community center. Currently, there are a hundred and sixty-five existing units. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on Tuesday, November twenty-ninth, and the neighborhood meeting report is attached to your staff report. Um, the applicant is proposing to add one hundred and thirty-three additional residential dwelling units to the existing one hundred and sixty-five units, bringing the total units on the site to two hundred and ninety-eight. Ten of those proposed units being added are cottage homes on the west side of the property between South Hughes and the existing building. So that's these buildings, um, near South Hughes. The PUD was approved with three hundred and fourteen dwelling units, and the applicant is, again, proposing two hundred and ninety-eight. The applicant also seeks to add a new twenty-five thousand square foot wellness center on the eastern side, on the Apex Peakway side of the site. And this is the, um, engineered drawing of the, um, proposed site. Um, the cottage units, as you can see, um, are in what is currently a grassed area. And the additional, um, building and wellness center, um, will connect, um, the buildings all the way around. The site is located in the secondary watershed protection overlay district. The amount of impervious surface proposed is four hundred and fifty thousand square feet, or sixty-six percent of the total site. Existing additional stormwater management ponds will be used to meet the UDO requirements for stormwater. The proposed major site plan meets all the requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance. RCA and preserve buffers will be protected during grading with true protection fencing. The proposed plan will expand existing water and sewer facilities. Um, pole-mounted lighting is proposed within the parking lot, and the lighting plan meets the standards of the UDO and match, um, and the pole lighting will match existing poles. There are three point four seven seven acres of RCA proposed on-site, which represents twenty-two point two percent of the site. The RCA is made up of riparian and required buffers at one hundred percent and site amenities credited at fifty percent. The applicant is meeting the required landscaping and has added supplemental landscaping. The applicant is proposing to supplement the existing type E streetfront buffers along South Hughes and Apex Peakway to a type A buffer. The existing type B buffer along the Rex Healthcare Facility will remain. The buffer along Lawrence Crossing in the corner of the Apex Peakway and Fifty-Five is to remain undisturbed riparian buffer.
What is it along the Peakway, did you say?
It's currently-
I got the, South Hughes.
It's currently a type E buffer, and that is what is required. The applicant has provided a supplemental planning plan that will meet a type A buffer.
Along the Peakway also?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And South Hughes?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Two community amenities are required for this major site plan. The applicant is proposing twenty-five thousand square feet in the wellness center in addition to the existing clubhouse and pond. Architectural elevations for all new buildings are provided. The maximum height of the residential buildings will be sixty-six feet, and the maximum height of the wellness center will be forty feet. None of the proposed buildings will be taller than the currently existing buildings. This is an, uh, residence from the north. Um, this is the west elevation. Um, this is what the cottage facing internally will look like. It's a two-unit building. The rear elevation facing South Hughes Street. And the wellness center, um, facing the Apex Peakway. This plan was required to be reviewed by Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Advisory Commission at the PUD approval in twenty fifteen. The original project unit total was two hundred and eighty-four units, which was approved in two thousand nine. In twenty fifteen, a PUD amendment was approved with additional multifamily units at, um, one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. Two hundred and eighty-four units will pay the original fee of one thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight per unit, and the additional units will pay the rate of eighteen ninety. The site plan shows a right-in, right-out on the Apex Peakway and a full movement access on South Hughes. There is a traffic light at the intersection of South Hughes and the Apex Peakway. Internal traffic will be able to circulate the entire building, or buil- built, series of buildings. The proposed major site plan is in compliance with the standards provided in the UDO, including the supplemental standards for congregate care facilities. The planning staff does recommend approval of the Cambridge Village Major Site Plan. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, at this time, let me ask, uh, council if they would like to ask any cross-examination questions for staff? This is your one op-
Oh, so, I'm sorry, no, I-
This is the one opportunity to do that. All right, um, and let me ask applicant if he has any, any cross-examination for what's presented, okay, all right, thank you. All right, this time, I'd like to call the applicant up to, uh, present their evidence, and, uh, if you have, um, uh, testimony you'd like to present tonight, now's the time.
Thank you, uh, mayor and council. My name's David York with Smithmore Leatherwood. My address, four thirty-four Fayette Street, Suite twenty-eight hundred Raleigh, two seven six oh one. Uh, I want to thank staff for working with us throughout this process, and I want to especially thank the, the team for reserve at, um, Mills Farms for allowing us to switch positions. We will try to be very brief. Uh, with me tonight are Stephen Beatty with Cambridge Village, James Whitaker with Advanced Civil Design, Michael Latner, and Jason Gable with Klein Design Associates. Uh, at first, we would like, uh, I'd like Stephen to stand up and just give a brief overview of their, of their goal here. Stephen?
Hello, uh, thank you for allowing our, our site plan to reach this point in the major site plan approval process. Um, I'm the director of, of design.
Before you get into the details, you need to introduce yourself and give us your credentials as an expert witness, please.
Okay. Uh, Stephen Beatty, and I am the director of construction and design for Cambridge Village.
All right, thanks.
Um, so Apex Independent, for our facility, is a independent facility solely, uh, we, uh, we strive to give our residents a very happy and active lifestyle, and the site plan will allow us to give them a healthy lifestyle as well by providing a wellness center. Um, we are currently, uh, have a ninety-eight percent occupancy, so this will allow us to meet, um, other needs to, uh, for people that are on the actual waiting list. And, uh, I also want to thank you, uh, for actually acknowledging us and providing us a property, business property, landscape award, and we strive to exceed those expectations on our future phases.
Right.
Do you have any questions?
If, if that is the end of your prepared evidence, then we'll ask. Are you, do you have anything you want? For, for Mr. Beatty?
For Mr. Beatty, I have no further.
All right, great, all right. So at this time, I'll ask, um, uh, if council has any cross-examination questions for Mr. Beatty? Not seeing any, let me ask staff?
No.
Okay, all right, we have no other questions for Mr. Beatty, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to give my credentials, but, uh, I may not be justifying. So anyway, just, uh, I'm a licensed attorney in the state of North Carolina. I've done practicing law for over twenty-seven years. Twenty-two of that has been focused on municipal law and zoning and land use law, and I'm a past chair of the zoning, planning, and land use section of the North Carolina Board Association, so, for the record. But I don't, that's probably all I'm going to say about that.
Thanks.
Um, in the interest of time, the remaining witnesses, I'm going to ask them with the board's, with the council's consent, uh, rather leading questions so we can get their testimony on the record fairly quickly.
Sure.
And so, uh, I'd like to ask, uh, Michael Latner, come up here.
And same as before? State your name and your credentials.
Good evening, my name's Michael Latner. I'm a registered landscape architect. I work with Klein Design Associates, one twenty-five North Harrington Street in Raleigh, two seven six oh three. Uh, I'm a registered landscape architect, land planner. Um, thirty-five years of, of professional registration, not only in North Carolina, but, I don't know, eight, eight other states. Uh, we've been working with, uh, Cambridge, uh, from the, uh, from the beginning of this second phase.
At this time, I'd like to offer Mr. Latner up as an expert. Uh, Mr. Latner, are you familiar with the town's UDO and land use plan?
Yes, I am.
Are you familiar with the subject property, the vicinity in the site plan before the council?
Yes, I am.
Is it your professional opinion that development proposed in the site plan and its general location is compatible with the character of the surrounding land uses?
Yes, I do.
Regarding the site design and landscaping, is it your professional opinion that the, the site plan meets or exceeds the requirements of town's UDO in particular Sections four point four, Article Seven, and Article Eight?
It exceeds it, yes.
Is it your professional opinion that the site plan advances the goals and objectives of the town land use plan?
Yes, it does.
I have no further questions of Mr. Latner.
Great, thank you, Mr. York. Council, any cross-examination questions for Mr. Latner?
No.
All right, not seeing any, let me ask staff? All right, thank you, we're done with Mr. Latner there.
And now I'd like to call up, uh, Jason Gable. Jason, if you would state your name, your credentials, and involvement with this project.
Uh, good evening, council. Uh, my name is Jason Gable. I'm a registered architect in the state of North Carolina since two thousand seven, ten years. Um, I've got about twenty-one years in the profession of architecture.
And your involvement in this project?
I am project architect and a senior project manager for Klein Design Associates at the same address that Michael Latner spoke about.
I would offer him up as an expert.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, are you familiar with the town's UDO?
Yes, sir.
Are you familiar with the site plan and the architectural renderings that were presented as a part of the site plan?
Yes.
Regarding the building design and architecture, is it your professional opinion that the site plan meets or exceeds the requirements of the town UDO in particular Sections four point four, Article Seven, and Article Eight?
It does.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. York. Um, Mr. Gable, we'll see if the council has any questions?
No.
All right, we'll ask staff? No questions, all right. Thank you, Mr. Gable. You are excused.
And, and now I'd like to, uh, call James Whitaker. And again, if you state your name, your credentials, and your involvement in the project.
Hi, good evening, uh, it's James Whitaker, um, with Advanced Civil Design. I'm a licensed professional engineer, uh, with twenty years' experience. Uh, I've been the owner of Advanced Civil Design for the last fifteen years, uh, working on projects like this, uh, on a daily basis.
And your involvement in this project?
I'm the civil engineer for the project.
Thank you. Uh, are you familiar with the town's UDO?
Yes, I am.
Are you familiar with the subject properties, the vicinity in the site plan before the council?
Yes, I am.
Is it your professional opinion that the site plan meets or exceeds the requirements of the town's UDO in particular Sections four point four and Article Seven, Sections seven point four and seven point five, and in Article Eight specifically, Section eight point one four?
Yes, it does.
Are you familiar with the town's transportation and road requirements and standards of the UDO?
Yes.
Are you familiar with NCDOT road requirements and standards?
Yes, I am.
Are you familiar with the road layout, traffic circulation, and access points shown on the site plan that's before the council?
Yes.
Is it your professional opinion that the road layout, traffic circulation, and access points shown on this site plan application meet or exceed the requirements of the town and NCDOT?
Yes, it does.
Is it your professional opinion that the construction of improvements shown on the site plan would not impair traffic and pedestrian safety at this location?
I agree with that.
Is it your professional opinion that the proposed development will not have a significant adverse impact on public facilities and services, including roads, potable water, wastewater facilities, parks, police, fire, and EMS facilities?
Yes, I agree.
I have no further questions of Mr. Whitaker.
All right, thank you. Council, uh, cross-examination? All right, staff? All right, thank you, Mr. Whitaker.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, I have no further witnesses. I believe the testimony presented, uh, has provided you with ample evidence, uh, for the record to support approving this site plan. However, if you have any further questions, we're happy to answer those. Uh, I believe the testimony shows that this project is compatible, meets or exceeds all relevant UDO standards, and will not have significant adverse impacts on public facilities and services. With that, we would respectfully request your approval.
Thank you, Mr. York. At this time, there would normally be, uh, opponent, uh, period, but there are no opponents. And since there are no opponents, I see no need for, uh, rebuttal evidence to be presented. Does that sound satisfactory? Okay, so we'll bypass that stage as well. Um, at this time, I'll ask staff if they have any closing arguments?
No.
All right, Mr. York, do you have any closing arguments?
Nothing in addition to what I've argued.
All right, very good. Uh, with that, guess what? We get to close the public hearing now. Um, appreciate everybody, uh, being, um, brief and concise. Uh, at this time, the council deliberates over the finding of fact. Um, we apply the UDO's major site plan standards as they relate to the issue of approving, approving with conditions or denying the major site plan. I'll go through the major site plan standards one at a time and call for discussion of each. The discussion on each standard should address whether the standard is met taking into account all the terms and conditions of the major site plan.
Is it required that we go through every little step?
Let, let's ask, do you feel that we need to go through the list individually, or can we ask for it?
I, I, I don't think you have to go through individually. If you have particular ones you'd like-
I don't think you have to go through individually. If you have particular ones you'd like to discuss.
All right. Thank you, I appreciate that advice. Let me approach it that way. Thank you for the question. The question I will pose to the counsel, given the counsel checklist that should be in front of you, we'll take a few seconds to see if anyone has any particular item that they would like to raise a comment on. And if I don't hear any, I will then follow that by asking if there's an objection to considering that part of the discussion done and then I'll call for a motion.
I'd like to say that the proposal definitely meets the UDO and I appreciate the applicant exceeding the UDO requirements for the buffers and enhancing this project.
All right. Does anyone need any more time to look over the list?
No.
All right, not hearing any. I will assume at this point, with no objection, that we will consider that list to be reviewed and at this time I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion of seconds to approve. Any further discussion? Not hearing any, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approval indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously and I'd like to say thank you very much for being concise again. Let's see, one last step here. An opportunity will be given to make offers of proof related to evidence that was not allowed to be presented. Don't see any? All right, we're done. Got to check every box. You know how it is, Mr. York. Thank you very much. I'll pause 10 seconds to let some folks head out. Mr. York will obey the speed limit on his way to Oldsville tonight. All right, thank you very much. And I would like to, before I enter into the next one, echo Mr. York's appreciation. Mr. Goesch, Mr. Morrissey, and Mr. Barker, I know you guys were willing to be swapped there and hopefully we will be able to be just as efficient with you guys. All right, well, that now done, moving a few papers here. We will now move into the public hearing number two. This is the major site plan for the reserve at Mills Farms. Counsel ready? All right, the town council normally functions in a legislative capacity, same instructions I gave before, et cetera, et cetera, except down to now. This is the major site plan for the reserve at Mills Farms. At this time, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who intends to speak during this, come up here now for swearing in with the town clerk. While you're walking, I'll just ask, who's with the applicant and/or supporters that will be specifically speaking, raise your hand, if you're applicants. Okay, is there an opponent here tonight? Please raise your hand high. Very good, all right. Continue with the swearing in. Yes, sir. Here's the list right there. Same instructions before for the counsel. Again, I'll just start, I've had no communications on this case, have no relational financial conflict, and I'm able to judge this impartially.
I have no financial conflicts, I have no intermediate communication, and can be impartial.
I have no conflicts and I can be impartial.
Likewise.
I have no conflicts and can be impartial.
What they said.
All right, all right. We'll take that.
I'm trying to do everything.
No, that's good.
You can go to Gene or Phil.
Yeah, so you can, yeah, I see what it is.
We'll do it later tonight.
At this time, I'll ask if anyone from the counsel has visited the site related to this case tonight, please indicate by saying so now. All right, not hearing anyone. We will move on to the next. At this time, I'll ask staff for opening statements. Okay, applicant, do you have opening statements? And this is not testimony time, this is just opening statement time. All right.
Good evening, Mayor Olive, Mayor Pro Tem Dejra, and members of the council. My name is Neil Goesch. I'm with the Morningstar Law Group. Here on behalf of Northview Partners, present evidence in support of its application for a major site plan for the reserve at Mills Farm, which is located off of Laura Duncan Road in Apex. I want to, the application for this major site plan is the culmination of a pair of cases you all approved unanimously in July and December of last year. We are pleased to be back in front of you all and we, as we take this next step, and moving forward with those projects. That's our open statement, and we'll call witnesses.
Thank you, Mr. Goesch.
I do have a quick question. This map was handed out prior to the meeting. It sounded to be officially entered into evidence.
Let's ask, so the town attorney, do you know about this?
I don't know about it, but it sounds like that's my.
Do you intend to introduce this as evidence in a little bit?
Yes, I do. It's a replacement of the landscape sheet. The applicant decided to swap out some of the landscaping and just for efficiency purposes, each of you are provided a paper copy and the applicant can provide more detail about the species regardless of still, staff position does not change.
All right, well, don't go anywhere because I think you're next. So at this time, we'll ask staff to go ahead and present evidence.
Okay. My name is Michael Clark. I've been with the Town of Apex surveying as a senior planner for almost two years. I do have approximately 15 years of experience as a planner, both in the private sector as well as the public sector. I do have an undergrad from Northern Michigan University in land use planning and management with a master's from Western Michigan University in geography with an emphasis on urban and regional planning and historic preservation. I am a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners for approximately eight years. This site is located off of Laura Duncan Road. It is two parcels, a narrow parcel here and then a much larger parcel here. As kind of a reference of point, this is Caliber Collision, Pine Plaza driveway, or Pine Plaza Road and the Costco in Nichols Development is just south of, off the screen. Town of Apex Transfer Station Utility is located right there. The applicant is looking for a major site plan approval. Currently, the parcel does have two different zoning districts. The majority of the parcel is zone high density, medium, or high density multifamily conditional zoning. It was rezoned specifically for this purpose and the narrow portion is rezoned plan unit development and that was done to accommodate the relocation of the historic Mills House, which is located approximately here onto this parcel as well as to use it for a portion of the congregant care facility. The future land use does call for this site to be as high density office employment and, or high density residential as well as office employment. Currently, the site does have three residential dwelling units. There are two residential dwelling units and accessory structures located on the larger of the parcel, including the historic Mills House and then there's a residential dwelling located on the Harris Track, which is just south of here. Otherwise, the site is mostly wooded. The applicant is looking for approval to construct a total of 152 dependent, or dwelling, or, sorry, 152 units, which would be a combination of independent living, assisted living, memory care units and this would be over a total of five buildings. I apologize, there should be clarification. These were listed as combined pods and listed, per the staff report, as one building. There are two structures that are interconnected with kind of an internal parkway.
Each one's two, so there's eight there?
I believe that there's a total of two units per structure, so eight units. And the applicant can go more into the floor plan for those. The site does consist of the larger building towards the front of the structure and coming back with internal courtyards and a dog park as well as garage parking and then the memory care units would be located in the back of the site. The historic Mills House would be located up towards the road in an appropriate location in accordance with the historic preservation easement that is being worked at with capital area preservation. And the applicant did have to receive a variance to allow for two access drives along Laura Duncan Road to be closer than what would otherwise be permitted. That variance was granted. I apologize, I wrote that down someplace. Oh, sorry, that was granted on October 20th, 2016. The grading for the site would have to be modified with the exception of the front part of the Harris Track, which would be left partly intact with the exception of where the Harris, or the Mills House would be relocated along with two of the accessory structures and that is in accordance with the HUD that was approved. The site would be serviced through utilities both of off of Laura Duncan as well as behind the parcel and would be connected to the neighboring development. The applicant, this is the old landscape plan. The revised landscape plan was provided before you tonight. The landscape does exceed the minimum requirements for the plan unit development as well as the minimum requirements for the Unified Development Ordinance. And the applicant has provided extensive architectural renderings of the site. This is the front, or the, yeah, this is the front elevation if you're looking at it from Laura Duncan. As a better example, they have provided perspective drawings as well. This provides a better example, or a better understanding of the main entrance. And then these are the memory care units. They're, per the site plan, there would be a second unit here and they'd be connected with an internal courtyard area. The Parks and Rec Department did, or Parks and Recreation Cultural Resources Advisory Commission did review this and recommended fee and loop for the project. Furthermore, staff does find that this is in compliance with the standards of the Unified Development Ordinance and staff does recommend approval as submitted with the revised drives.
All right, thank you very much. Before you leave, let me see if counsel has any cross-examination questions.
There is an E buffer along Laura Duncan, so.
I believe that is correct.
It looks like it's.
Yes.
It's more populated though than what an E buffer typically is?
That is correct. The applicant, which should have a park-like setting, so is including supplemental plantings.
The buildings are, the one concern I do have is the sawtooth oak. Is that deciduous or is it evergreen?
Oaks are deciduous, I believe.
Typically, they are, but there are evergreen oaks.
I'm not an arborist, so I can't speak on that.
Perhaps ask if that tree type is consistent for the buffer, because that would be what he's presenting the buffer specifications.
Yeah.
Our zoning.
It's an E buffer, so it would be consistent.
Oh, okay. All right.
I would expect because.
And our zoning compliance officers have reviewed the proposed landscape plans and have confirmed that they're actually exceeding the minimum requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance.
Does that put it into a different category? Exceeding their buffer requirements of E, does it put it into a different classification that we have?
It possibly could, but we have not determined that classification.
Just looking at the buffer, I like what's done. The concern I do have is the, is the oaks being deciduous then the winter is quite a bit different than the summer in terms of park-like look.
And the applicant may be able to speak on that further.
All right, any further questions?
Yeah, regarding Fowler View Drive, is there any sidewalk connectivity? It looks like it's not going to connect to Pine Plaza Drive, although there is a line there. It's kind of indicating it might someday.
The applicant has been in discussion with the individual that does own the parcel between the back of their parcel and Pine Plaza Drive. So currently, there is no direct connection at this time. However, the applicant is proposing a sidewalk which would run parallel to Mills Chase Loop and then to Fowler View Drive.
Yeah, but that's dead ends there.
Where, at the end of the property, that's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, not hearing anyone else. Thank you. At this time, let me ask Mr. Goesch if you have any cross-examination for Mr. Clark.
I do not, but we will be able to provide more information as to the landscape.
Sure, you'll have that moment in just a little bit. All right, thank you, Mr. Clark. Thank you. All right, that concludes the step where town staff present evidence. At this time, the applicant may present evidence and any expert witnesses. Mr. Goesch.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask that all the exhibits relied upon or referred to by our witnesses, including the staff report and all of its attachments be moved into evidence and that judicial notice be taken with regard to the content of the UDO, the 2030 land use plan and any other adopted plans of the town.
All right, so noted.
Our job tonight is to show you through the evidence that the plan meets all the requirements of the UDO and we intend to do that through the exhibits and testimony of Mr. Jonathan Callahan of John A. Edwards and Company. Mr. Callahan is the project lead engineer and is an expert in this field. I'd like to call him up to the stand. And we also have with us Mr. Scott Keiger with Design Resource Group and Frank Morrissey and Mark Barker with Northview Partners, who can answer your questions if you have any. But at this time, I will call Mr. Callahan to the stand.
All right.
Our presentation might be a little different than the last one.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. My name is John Callahan. Address 333 Wade Avenue in Raleigh, 27605. I am the co-owner and president of John A. Edwards and Company. It's been a civil engineering and surveying firm in Raleigh since 1957. I have over 23 years of experience in civil engineering and site development, a BS degree in engineering from UNC Charlotte, been licensed as a PE since 1997, and licensed as a surveyor since 2000. I've worked on many similar sites across the state of North Carolina.
We'd like to proper him as an expert witness.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Clark has already done an excellent job giving you guys the quick overview, so I'm just going to kind of bump through this real quickly. The, got to slide with the existing aerial conditions. As you can see, the Mills House is located here, which will be relocated on the narrow strip. The site is currently wooded with some residential structures and barns here. This is the substation to the north. We've got single-family residential, I'm sorry, this would be the east and then north, single-family residential. Caliber Collision was back to the west and then across to the south here was the recently approved Meridian at Nichols Plaza apartment project as well as beyond that is the Costco. The proposed project will be for 152 congregant care units, include a mix of 98 independent living units, 54 assisted living, and actually four memory care units. So there was some question about that earlier. There's four individual buildings at this side that are the memory care units. The project will include amenities for the residents. There are several plazas and courtyards here, here, and here. There's a dog park. There's in-house dining, recreational areas, and many common areas for opportunities for social gathering. Additionally, we are providing a connection to the Greenway which runs here. So just quickly, I will go through the review standards from UDO Section 2.3.6E. As far as compatibility, the subject property, as shown here, just covered all the neighboring uses and it's my professional opinion that the property is consistent and harmonious with the character of the surrounding land uses and in coordination with the. with the character of the surrounding land uses and in, in, uh, coordination with the, uh, two thousand and thirty land use designation for the property. Uh, zoning district supplemental standards. UDO section four point four requires all multifamily developments with one or more dumpsters to have a trash compactor, which also must provide recycling area and cardboard dumpster, which would be screened with similar materials. And we do, uh, meet that section of the code. And that dumpster is located on this, this area here. Uh, site plan has been prepared in accordance with Article Eight of the UDO. Staff has also reviewed the plan and found the site plan to be consistent with these general development standards. Mitigation of development on steep slopes. The topography of this parcel and the proposed plan result in the site not being subject to those requirements for mitigation of steep slopes as contained in section eight point one point four of the UDO. Dedication of right-of-way for the thoroughfare plan. Laura Duncan Road is specified to be a four-lane thoroughfare with median on the transportation plan. We are providing twenty additional feet of right-of-way dedication along the frontage of Laura Duncan Road here, which will meet the ultimate section that's planned on the transportation plan. Uh, other relevant standards of the ordinance. Uh, it is in my professional opinion that the development meets all of the other relevant standards of the ordinance. Uh, staff has also reviewed the plan and found the site plan to be consistent with those relevant standards. Uh, applicable standards of Article Seven for subdivision. And although the project is not a subdivision, the proposed plan is meeting all the applicable standards with regard to street utility extensions, RCA, and greenway. Impact on public facilities. The site has been designed in accordance with UDO standards. We have performed stormwater analysis for the proposed development. We are exceeding the code requirement by retaining the twenty-five-year storm. Uh, we do not anticipate that proposed development will have any significant or adverse, uh, impact on public facilities and services, including roads, potable water, wastewater facilities, parks, police, fire, and EMS facilities. It is therefore, in my professional opinion, that the proposed site plan before you has met all nine of the required standards for major site plan, uh, from section two point three point six E of the UDO as outlined. I have nothing further.
Mr. Callahan, I have one question, or maybe a series of questions, just to clarify. I think, uh, there may be a little bit of confusion, may have misspoke. Uh, is it you're understanding that the, the memory care cottages? There are four memory care cottages looking generally in the south of the.
That is correct.
Development, and there are six units in each cottage?
There are six beds in each unit.
Okay. So that would be a total of twenty-four, uh, memory care units over four buildings. Is that correct?
Uh, I think it's twenty-four beds. I'm not sure it's considered a whole unit.
Sure. Twenty-four beds over four buildings. Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Appreciate the clarification. Um, is there any more evidence from Mr. Callahan?
There is not.
Okay. All right. Let me bring it to council to see if there are any cross-examination questions for Mr. Callahan.
Who's the proper person to speak about the connection of, uh, Fowler View Drive? That would be just gentlemen?
Mr. Callahan can speak to that. Uh, I will say that, that, uh, my client has been in contact with the, uh, adjacent property owner who has not agreed to give that access. So we are putting this stuff out there.
Okay.
Uh, but cannot provide the cross-access without, uh, an agreement with the adjacent property owner. But if there are other questions, I think, Mr. Callahan should.
I'll get the answer. Thank you.
All right. Not seeing anything from council. Mr. Callahan, thank you very much. Mr. Goos, your next witness?
That is all of our witnesses. Uh, like I said, we do have, uh, other representatives here if there are questions that council has.
All right. Um, so, uh, a tad non-standard, but I'll ask if council has any pent-up questions they'd like to ask a different person, then Mr. Goos can call the appropriate person.
I, I just do, I like the buffer along the front and that sort of thing, but I'm, I'm concerned about the, uh, the sawtooth oak. If they could be replaced by evergreens in some locations, but that's just a suggestion. It's not a requirement.
Let me ask, um, not to leave too much, but Mr. Goos, do you have someone who might want to present testimony on the buffer or the characteristics of the contents of the buffer?
Yes, we sure do. If you want to approach down, Mr. Keiger.
I think once he is able to prove, at least take the stand, then we can ask him a question on that topic.
Sure. Can you state your name and your qualification?
Uh, Scott Keiger, Design Resource Group, uh, Landscape Architects in North Carolina, South Carolina. Been with Design Resource Group for, uh, going on twenty years now. Uh, my address is, uh, one, two, six, three, five Diamond Drive, Pineville, North Carolina.
And we'd like to offer him up as an expert witness in this field.
Okay. Um, just for clarification, can you state your role in?
Sure. I'm principal with, uh, Design Resource Group and I'm a project manager for the land plan.
Project, okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Uh, did, did you want to present anything in particular on buffers?
If you could speak about the buffers and their, and the content.
Sure. I can just, uh, directly to your question on the sawtooth oak, that is a deciduous tree. Um, we've provided a variety of trees in there. We've got some, uh, deciduous trees. We've got some evergreen trees. We've got some small maturing trees in there. So we have a wide variety of trees to give you a rounded, all year round.
Okay. What are the, what are the evergreen trees?
I believe we have a Nellie Stevens, pardon, let me slip over to the plan open.
Okay, which is a small, it's a bush tree.
Yes.
I guess.
We, we haven't planted it eight foot tall. I mean, they'll get up to about.
Twelve feet, fourteen feet, maybe.
Fifteen feet, so.
Yeah. Um, I guess my only concern is, and I, you know, it's not a requirement, but if all of the sawtooth, larger trees are deciduous, then you've got the buildings behind and it, we kind of lose the small-town effect in the winter. That's my concern. And I was hoping that you could find, or work with staff to find, like, few evergreens that would.
We can definitely work with staff to couple with some additional trees if that was.
Or, or replacement or something just to, just to, for the winter to take a little bit of the bite off of the tall buildings.
We can definitely, uh, entertain.
I'd agree with that.
We can entertain that. It's not a problem.
Okay. All right. If you could do that up in the.
Yeah, we can sub, substitute some trees out for that.
Okay. That works. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keiger. Um, so let me, let me just ask, um, Mr. Goos, so, well, let me make sure I get this thing back on track here. So is there any other, uh, council comment, que, sorry, not comment, but question for Mr. Keiger on that topic? It sounds like we resolved that question.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Keiger. Um, Mr. Goos, did you have anything else that you wanted to present tonight for evidence?
Not as evidence, unless there's other questions that you have, you all have. Otherwise, we, I'm prepared to make closing statements.
I do have a question. Is there a pathway sidewalk connection, something down to the Apex Nature Park or the Apex Community Park?
Yes.
Community lane?
So which expert would you like to present?
Mr. Callahan.
Uh, yes, there is a, we're providing a Greenway Trail connection, which is located here. And that does connect to the existing greenway that leads over to the park.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else, Mr. Goos, then I think maybe we're done with your time. All right. Did you have anything else? Anybody else you wanted to put up?
Yeah.
All right. All right. Thank you very much. Um, that concludes the applicant's evidence for tonight. Um, at this time, I saw no opponents, um, in the room, so we are proceeding without opponents and rebuttal. Um, at this time, I'll ask staff if they have closing arguments.
We do not.
All right. And Mr. Goos, do you have closing argument? All right.
And just for the record, this is Neil Goos, attorney for Northview Partners, the applicant. Um, at this time, I would like to move into evidence all the exhibits relied upon by our witnesses. Just to make sure that's on the record. Um, section two point three point six E two of the UDO sets forth the findings that you all must make to approve a major site plan. Uh, there are nine of them. Eight of them are applicable in this case because there's, this is not a subdivision. Uh, and Mr. Callahan testified in his professional opinion that each of them had been met. Uh, through his testimony and the exhibits, he demonstrated how the supplemental zoning standards had been met. He testified to the overall compatibility of the project and its compliance with the relevant standards of the UDO. He explained that there were no steep slopes on the site, as that term is used in section eight point one point four of the UDO. And he described how the plan meets the requirements for right-of-way dedication and other improvements. Uh, all the competent substantial material evidence in the records shows that we have met all of the requirements of the UDO for approval of a major site plan. Moreover, given that both of the associated rezoning cases were approved unanimously by you all, which we appreciate, we feel that the request is one that the town should be happy to grant so that this project can move forward. Therefore, we respectfully request for your approval of this major site plan and will be glad to address any questions you have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Goos. At this time, I'll close the public hearing since we have gone through the proceedings, uh, and ask council for deliberation on the finding of facts that we heard tonight on this major site plan. Um, at this time, I'll, uh, do like we did last time, which was a great idea, uh, to ask everyone to make sure they have in front of them the Reserve at Mills Farm Council checklist standards for site plan. And I will, um, pause for several seconds to see if anyone has a comment or a concern on any of these items as far as standards and compatibility goes. Is there anyone that needs more time?
No.
All right. Uh, not hearing anyone needing more time, I will consider that matter reviewed. And at this time, I'll ask council if there is a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion on that motion?
Uh, I just think it's a, a good item for Apex once again. And, uh, I do appreciate the twenty-five-year stormwater management. I think that's important because we have our lake right down there. And I think these folks have done a good job.
Great.
Second is someone.
All right. Not hearing any further discussion. I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right. The matter passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And appreciate everybody's, uh, patience and, uh, also your willingness to, uh, forego your, your first lot. Thanks for sticking around, folks. Thank you. Uh, while. Yeah, we're still in meeting. Um, at this time, uh, we have, we have concluded our public hearings. Uh, there's no old business, no unfinished business, no new business. And this time, we have one last item closed, uh, session. Um, and just as a reminder for the public, there are no further items after our closed session. Um, at this time, I'll ask for, uh, a motion to go into closed session uh, for the purpose of handling the matter of City of Fayetteville and Public Works Commission and the City of Fayetteville versus North Carolina Environmental Management Commission, North Carolina Department of Environmental and National Resources, Town of Cary, and Town of Apex. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Okay. Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor of going to closed session for this purpose indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right. We're now in closed session.